Mola al ngaya Senet Pil 11/29, el mocte gartelul dasan mola amo mal mal ngasi galdu uleleng sabaid al continue nganiya pension planer git. Matyal Senet Pila mil nga ra gotalo miwele ra senet arsera April 26, 2021. Emle asay nal mora kamitira Waysen Means. Et yal bil awulang ngari ngi a gidahmle direk al last al kabalmenta kadirig al mil sadra osisiwa al problem ra pension. Al wasai abay 2024 al mo 2025 ngaya mo tiha udo mang il clo al bangelela kabalmenta. Al wasai magaranga mosabaid al yal al bola kaudod ra pension eh aigal pay out taril anga angara 10 million eh aigal projection aseng marail al mora barabikarak is more retirees al ngara ba waudu vira retire. Nsile mo 12 million, 13 million, 14 million sile al do rai al molmo. Awul mang way al koramre adal mo tiha udo drital al pension fund. Ma ah ah senetorsan ngartara electuta wa ngariya Vice Chairman ra Waysen Means Committee, Senator Isael, diregal ngari ngi Flo Leader ra Senet, Senator Cecily Aldabel, ma Senator Mason Whips, Senator Umi Isangbaw, ma Senator Regis Agitaya, ma Senator Andrew Tavaluwal. Eh damadangi Chairman et ya koramal maringala omso del al bil, patoka uural nga al sile al al project alwasing magaranga dabo da sabaid al sustainer tial plan al suguma segid ra rai la podo ogi ngi. Maktingul mor segidet Chairman eh eh oydia olka yungal lekong magakora ah mo opening statement temer kongi introduce ra rule bange malme merkomo seidal lomu ar tial hiring electuta. Sulang.
Sulangi Chairperson, Senator Inabo, um ngara sikwid na kamura Chairperson eh trustee Civil Service Pension Plan. Ah opangir ngartara Elsil sa ngari ngi Vice Chairperson na kamaman Elisa Tamore, trustee Okabe, Felix Okabe, ma trustee Smul. Diregal ngartiang Administrator Pension Plan nganiya kali Elliot Oduy ma direkel wal si Fora Pension Plan an misa abardil. Um sulangi diktu ikagidil dikirdebe al opening statement tendene sumadra boarda sol kwaadi kumobe vira opening statement tendi ungi le. Electuta eh eh ah ma abududi ra adra beneficiary smatir contributing members mteke eventual beneficiaries ra pension plan abududi ngara magitela anga 34.3 million. Okay? 34.3 million. Ngataate enti bil ungi la ayega nombere kal 3-4 years eh ngawa ngari ngi a mle ungi la egarami ma ayega listak market magitra bro ambregel mang waldi ra sal mal lusa klo ludu. Diregal ngari ngi sile 3 to 4 million dollars ebela appropriate ringa olbi masire aigal last 2 years mang sebel osobla pension plan mteki nagivom withdraw. Ah diso kaldi ku bevir ato koi lal gida lasel current situation na pension plan 2019 el altai mekimru ra actuaristadi ra pension plan as required by law. Masile actuaristadi ase motoda sometime na year to next year 2022. Mongawa ngi ungi kora seasigna sente lasel unfounded liability. Unfounded liability ra pension plan usel blal sa ah approximately 180 million as of 2 years ago. Segid sekllo blal sekidal figure out asen magarado palmerio or eliminate ringi mense elso bela pension plan. Ah agote diso kaldi loliyare korda se mil adra boarda kim nemit matira management ra pension plan eh number one engdi agim mal ungi la namamla se adro olbi la sebilgu ah ungi tial teale gore manas mal restructure la mang sabaid al figure out asen ngara sel loal long term, mid term goal er git msebel Sabertial Plan. Ah diwan el mainel sile ishul kidalwa madangali akmula seel altai mia asel wal shortfall contribution versus pay outa benefits sa taita ngara 3 to 4 million na year. Se dodangali bekla adro kui. Ah sile 3 to 4 million na year sesu mteki al sisabai ke ludoz eh malubu ndia alsebeela pension plan ma egay gidil complete contribution malubu ela mnamo deha ppef dat tali ke environmental fee. Engari segid shortfall mase gidel mo force kidal mo withdraw sel ludoz ngara magit mendeha seel sel ludoz ngama kit lomele. Gduluso sile teal. So we have to figure out weela se segidel bleeding emmagarada stoper ngi. Awul magi ol meluusel me bebe atamopra babilngam ending awul magi omaklati dakauklatia dalongala da se wansa magit ungi ela disuun wansa momakita magit esel 34 million asebeli hermide kual partner ngi. Mang number one a giolduba ra adosu ase oing mal gidel reform ngidel number time engi ngari ngi reform restructure ending gidel take into account ase aplansan ngari ngi ediregal ngari take the bleeding, bleeding every year of 3 to 4 million emmagiram withdraw. Alastak ngartia, lastaki ma kia one asel kimoral we hope lasem ne clear lasa one the thing that we need to do is we have to figure out ase ya lwi ngidela leadership tablo figure out asen magrasabai el funder segid shortfall. Ah pension plan adia gal liability ra kianga basically programa government. Kabalmenta harao ra contribution. Angado obrua kabalmenta gore ngusel ngatl obruore ngari ya trilgebado delto ma contributor ngi ma kabalmenta harao. Mang ya ga ngo dal adra hara artiang kabalmenta gidel osikrole lasen magarada hara. Maktikmu ike gidil gidebe opening statement tendene endene ngari ngi ago dal adra boarda sol kmu korakmu ike ngayala gekim mo il dia obloa leo gorqau eh Chairperson a giunit asefali bodnga ra badosa darabil al momerek edabora sile milliman report, sile report tial bil al vice ser ngi albeke bevira recommendation andene sile malontma ma sile badosa da segidel last la se ngangseadel mteki kaudodergel el mo kabar segidel shortfall mang doru legal restructure ngara bi la ma reform ra pension plan atleast ngari seidel ludoz mal stopera pension plan withdraw sel magit ludoz ngama kit mese lomele. Sulang.
Um sulangi Chairman. Mani asoal kmosesei ma ah pay masao lersel suggestioner qau ma agote dabo da dabora bi ma tial luldasan mola a dihaal peesal bil kadamla introduce ngira al lastal olbi lildirek eh ending mle mocte garingi amo implementaigal recommendations ngar sel miliman report. Ma akulangi tra Vice Chairman Isael ngamatakatangal lo meser tial idal bil malbod sabaid al korasmodi seidal bil laske da samariri ngi eh iboda tiri kalboda anexer se ibod sabaid al masao taigal recommendationsera miliman report ma hangaral changes sa sabaid al mo utmokla. Sulang. Opangie Chairman Isael.
Ah Chair Madam Meri Falus segidil bemura adra la nirqau Kamri Requestingi miskidakora alikal review tial SB 11/29 eh bay korogoreke rager lomu ra page 1, lomu ra page 2 raul desuvi dirgaiti gal adra boarda amnamasang. Sile dabo tial alikal review eh tial bi la a proposal mo amendra bevira sectionera chapter 20 rado ri 3p ensil ngiamle ulap pension lumul. Seno meser sile gotal el ngar sile iron page 1 asis section 3 of the bill a mo amend tial Senet Pil 11/29 a mo amendra a jurisran new leave rename retirement fund for the trustees found in 20, section in 2010 el mo relief gemiu adra boarda a responsibility of establishing the amount of employee or government contribution to the fund. I say however, the board is now empowered to seek relief for contribution payments to the trust fund operation plan. Chair ngora shortel sentence ngara gorakamenta gemiu gidet tial gidil proposal el mortial
Skopangie Vice Chairperson, sile kosh kamut sekushener qau.
Diso kaldi ngua desuvi gidet tial gidil lukret tial madadat tial page 1 asen Senet Pil 11/29 namomodi mle jurisran newly rename retirement fund for the trustees el daptiga ngi ra section 2010. El mo relief ra fund or board aigal which responsibility gemiu establish ra amount of employee or government contribution. Magri kakasi el altai presently sile 6% kantibia employee ma employee same by regulation adang by law.
Se semle se semle la eh mle establish ra operational plan mse operational plan egadu seteringi 6 ma 6 imama dera 1987 meela. Dina al sile segidel la tial gidel amenderingi kitial proposal asem lup taringi amilsa kti seel abord mteke bel adjuster segidel contribution rate. Di kim adjusta contribution rate tengirama mo thurru Administration Procedure Act tial gidil ki blam adjusteringi el ungi ta se bongela president ra se halgi mul donosi irawan segidel mle andene House initiate ra joint resolutional basically legislative veto say.
Tial amend menzo ungi la dan siet nshadal ngar sile ngargirela.
Ah akundaswe in ngamada ki ma adra tial boarda lomu oraran ding ding I think engi gidel ngari ngi some sort of mechanism al domeser ngi whoever future board members ma adra ngartia ltsukum ngidel changeeringi msebel ngari ngi segidel teal changeeringi. In fact akmene oni ken mnelautra ngara kamral toko likmilsal minara section bora page 4 bi eh milngupt ngil milngupta sile first line number 5 al mo number 7 na milngupta a gi gidel tablo klisi ra adjustmenter se. Andene akulsi gidengi tiang although as adra la akmilsa ngawana closing ngar setiang al actually masa blanggetel klisi a abordal el sebel adjust or amender sile operational funder ngim so I really could kana se okay bele tamlanguptil se indense el abordu lospe rawana a closing ngartiang ngi amender segidel peesal operational plan. Ed ed
Kamri Kritiang ngara ngara oracional behind the relief ra til al klo ngara alela abord. Le ngawa wo meser ngi lo asia abordagirel ngariya klisi el el lo mesra adjustment ra contribution le tirgaya ungora artial program lo meser ngi ra adeili operationi um abungusel oridi ra boarda komun morke. Sile sile ngara alla.
Actually sile tial bi la was drafted based ra minimum report mang minimum report tamde setra awal de setra kasi mengara uretra ngaramu urete mndrafted SS ldimnaka dimnaka nguera ngi nguera di liliangal basicling mle 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 mocte ria kakasi lebol designeringiya bede designi by law. Tial di draftel bi ra ngara House agin ne paseringi ra January 2020 ngara second meeting emergoy mlo medel engi wasro covid mang biwut tol tuhol antu ite emir tial gidim ngiluus segidel taim el me engusarala arela mang el muutel kri neringi lotu budi awula kulu keds ra auduswe la boarda asen rau desuvi gidel segidel basicling akuram nabespes asing ngaramle intentionera agim drafter ngil wayse ndi basicling lebase ra artia gidil luldasu le ak ya ngi ngaramle diskaseringi la asing tia sere al gotalo mu ngala amedik tait ra contributiona employee ma employer. Mle wayse Chairmani. Ndii olbi dakula anetenseringi isam tu olbi lagoo ndesa mamal mor segidil ligamantial suman ya 401k eminimena aset justra 3 point contribution sumalwakanistan. Zindi tia subject for amendment ya gal ya gal ba.
Ula ngi apde aska opinion omiu asen asomiu maintenanceel dangani de la andi nga ka omra asimoral gira ngadiakise labordu designering much faster. Adi ishua kakasi administrative title six are directly 420 days. Mang asimutu dulil ngara ilwi except 120 days then we speed it up.
Wayse Chairperson eh ma diregal Vice Chairperson committee kuknga ka personally akundasasengunwi debereisei um laga dolupte sekisi el abordal adjust regardless engari ngi check and balanceeringi le tdirga method system. Ni ngari ngi timesel bevira taim el um asa practitioner ngari ngi gebevira taim sesugu mandiaga blatak ngara la eng eng mo kosa some sort confusion ama akmadinga se ngari ngi taim el may last tial al years more than 10 years ikmber abordel pension plan ngari ngi el taim ngidel al lo mesi adjust mang digid mo thurra process I think sile process omwi process mtekebe.
Kilma yi keep in mind it Chair ma dabora badosa daruretra asel peesel system eh 3% but whatever percent eh ibod make sure direkt ngara imala boarder mo designeringi.
Okay, sulang. Halaba Chair.
Kabangi Trustee Smul, bidang ngari ngi kamenta qau.
Nga kakki segidel el responsibility akundaswe se ablil base ngiya board emle recommend asel 1% increase eh through APA leng kadamlo meser ngi lo asia abordamnamo ma plan amnamo uspea additional ludu segidel mle 1% emlo ngiya egilduru klila gore olbi le unfortunately kom kom komil godir. Mang ya galsoadal lo meser ngi wayse kada bay erem ngara alela abordal lo mesra klisi ela aurere la pension edingi la adjusta awana adjustmentel gidela audodel meso isubra plan a true adjustment ra contribution. Mang bay waykele olgo Chairman memdebe erem el el dil wayse eh ngwadro lela la endingariya processel goturui. Sulang.
Um sulang. Mang dadamov ani Chairman mor sel section 4 bi.
Alia samlo kedsi.
Um um kamsoadakel changesa section 4.
Sen section 4 tial bi la akukwa masadal wasia sile ngara la arela section 2021 a mo direct abord el momente ra defined benefit system for the retirees mteke beneficentaries and other people who do not choose to move to the retirement income security program. Tial gidil best toko Chairman na kamura kimospeeringiya tia aswin segidil 401k type ndi agiding ilu ra minimum. Mang tianga wabodlu asitigel adal el el altai tangan tial system ngari ngi defined benefit adimo melmol melngari ngi mteki gidil emergoy other people who did not choose to move to the retirement as well as providing the rules and regulations mteki debesel system. Further, the provision that require the board to amend the plan to adjust benefit to fund cost of living adjustment. Also move section. Segidil further provision will require a board and amend the plan to adjust benefit to fund the cost of living of se amal too far fetched for el al domeser ngi dimnara minimum report if the situation we're in sile adal sebedel afforder ngi sile mendinga segid ya gamitimo omeser ngi leng ndirga katal lebor ngiya cost of living ra pension mlo ngi ra a fifth endera fifth emergoy tusitnuar 6 adra 6 olbi lagula mo godir leng we was not 25 dollar. Seidakora tial bi la direkt mo remove sile existing language ngara section 2026 but 2027 la concerning the authorization of money to administer the program and appropriation to fund benefits to the people who work for previous government controlling the republic. The new section 2026 declare that 1987 pension plan will continue to cover retirees in there. However, it can no longer cover employees after October 1, 2022. Aging ilu tial mo isegid lo ase se agim draftel tial bi ra 2019 emle gidel 2021 ndii agim drafteringi la ngi mo 2022 leng agi mdaset tial bo la langa itakes one year emmo effect effective na taim se gora di dilar she meaning digel adre meso isub ra after seidel date automatik bitamora besel system. Ending direkt ngari optioner gidil guk konged iklo dar adre gida ngara fabiusa temil. Tial bi la direkt monira mbela idissection guadi ngari ngi audusim gidega gidil ngartial section 4. Ale dinguile eh Vice Chairperson, Chairperson ma senetorsa bagumul. I think engidel almuel explaineringi mka damo madangil asetiang ngara sel mocte gartian transition malubu merger malubu change. Mu yuralla eh andene ka gidil Senator Sa'lem Lamutul nomaklat kira ngak ah audasasetirigel currently el tir a naritaa el malan awudir adia gal changes tir. Okay? Now anexel partra la kasi el anga sokum mle start al contribution ra January 1, 2021 el maral mer el alsil and then you get a an option. Asa aktimala mol malke tial defined benefit tial current system dangari or actovdel mor sile rispa malubeng hm DC malubeng 401k. We did some numbers mang el anga tregaididul muura January 1, 2001 a represent ra 82% ra active contributing members. Tregelul muululul ra January 1, 2001 el tirado wa la aksega proposal aksega domestira optionel move el mora DC maludifa contribution a represent ra 82% ra active members malubu 2910 la out of 3546. Malu lo sebagaru maktyas administrator kabaskida sentela sile lo ul tiramla contribution neklo tuteleli anexel point ngara. A total contribution tiragidel 2910 la tregambo ro kabalmenta January 1, 2001 throughout these years are 19,889,078 dollars. Nga ku mesra bi la ku akums ah ku wayse ase akna abi akna bi la mase tregel domestira optionel mal move el mora 401 malubu tial DC plan a 2000 tregel domse optiona 2910 la abdal al contributione tiragidel la ra since January 2001 emel ela 2021 are 19,889 19.8 million let's just say, let's just say 20 million abdal al contributione. Now, these are sets of my personal questions. Se sokum godo muul ra beesel DC plan 401k or whatever egidu esuun ngangle ngbeot ngara a visualize ra adra dharingi ra klugu. Esel dharingi da ada klugu ddisho isubel jero first the pay check gari gidal minus 63%, governmental 3%, 6% tanga ltsel ahauntrin. Tirgaidel adre letse tunubrioret 82% or let's say 10% tira mta 290 la adi say drasa gi mocte gidel pees. What do we do el mor sile ludoz tiramna sisabira last 12 years? Let namutul mo mu yuralla emlamo mesra minimum sebedel akundasakoy gido oyti or kada accounteringi laseng liability ngudu din endinga se mase ngudu din leng ya ka badangela udo. Right? You get 13 cents. Ya xel badangela udo. So let's say akasi ah tang over your Senator Whipsa ulubiora mla Senator so for so many years and so is bigida contributioneringi he decides to I want to go to this new DC plan. Walk into pension plan office asetela udo ngara ahauntra ngak. Then let's say we'll say for example the example 20,000. Set 20,000 and actually tis xedihaal maral badangela udo. Now I understand that as Senator Whipsa da xel ngusel ludoz sile taim. Right? He has to wait until he retires and then he takes that money. Se amringa ngaki se amri se amringa udo sweka leng hm se se amringa udo personally se amringa udo sweka. Mang kabek mu segidil first question loder si.
Okay, malungila ak questioner qau. Eh reading all these documents and dirgal malmle eh ak questional doswe. Ma ah tial miliman report ah recognize akmula sing ndi kaudod mauul ma kada kada opener tial account ngara de elolanga 20,000 dollars ser ngi let tia balse dal mora ngala plus every year from the day till the transfer tial ludoz dal mora accounteringi mora DC plan eka dam sangan 3% tal investment earnings ser ngi guaranteed every year from that day forward. Ndii awulang ngari ngi esel ludozargel kabalmenta ringin malang agidel omagekar sile ahauntra ngi mangga ngua ah a seteringi il recordadal ngara eungelakklil endinga kabalmenta dirga balsera se ndi ya kal immediate lit tial kiasal bor alsel tial ahauntra ngi. Legida dirga kadirga close sile dalongalel ah motoba ma metmo el lobat talgiba investment earnings eobat talgibar sile lolar ngi kabalmenta ra barak. Segid sile viable mechanism el eventweling galad sile retire 15 years from now he'll retire 20 years from now he'll retire, 3 years from now retire eng lamor ngiya enough ngar sile ahauntra ngi asabaid al create ra anu with the funder ngi eng malaya retirement ter ngi at least ten fifteen years. Kukorangua I mean, I was thinking about that really hard for a long time. Eh omdasak ma say mang ding til a gidabasis ra create rabal sile kabalmenta the government owes 20 million al mortal fund legal ludozira adal gidel mora accounter ti and then we divide it to every year ya kabalmenta gidel malanga ri so by the time ngalada retire eng muy tial ahauntra ngi raudod namodeha dilblals namodeha la IOU lamu fullak kiasa tial ahauntra ngi mense esat tial drawdowner ngi on retirement.
Ndii sile optional sile bladobora defined contribution sile optional lolo ngiya Chairperson kasi ngungusinda egal defined contribution under 401k kasi also kumnamus
Why we here?
Why say?
I mean, I make a recommendation and say that we should follow it. We will discuss it.
Why say?
Okay. By the way, no terming, there can send a review, but for Pat Rigel, according to the government after you leave, they give you, you know, chairman, the loss is for the discussion, this is for the committee report, they will, I mean, mention second meeting. Adam.
Chairman Hallethick, make a together comment. Ah, a cash flow doesn't have to tie with, ah, holding it around the most in the land. Ling, accounting process, my cash flow process, at the time, it's necessary loss is you at the same time. So, the owner was the, of the pool or tell you though, that at the the necessary loss is you all, all timing. Mang, what the milliman does, ah, o espero cash flow cover, ah, a DB plan? At the same time, say by enough, if I'm getting out of the, by the time, the other more retire, a DC plan, in the moment, we tell the bank account. You know, say you did, you did, I'll call him, did he also better visualize, you know?
Why say, I got, I got, why say chairperson, I got accountant, I'm getting cook from my fiduciary duty as a, a, a board member, and I don't play with, say, cash flow, we play by what's in the books. If, I'm saying, the mover say, then you have to give us five point five million. It's one package. You can't tell me, Mulas, they go to the old thing, take your twenty percent of IOU. What is that? Yeah, I ask you, my government, I'm a government, I'm told government, you know, I have a vested interest in this. I have a property interest, I have a property right.
Abol wayse gidin mral gidin siya wudud al mor sey. Ebed baqta biil wayse gidil ba'aa, kada ma'ala ba tablul ba'aa lalgal. Edgida dirigadil ya sey gidil, lina amt al mukutmakli. Agumdasin gidil mungil masati amindiahda. To ba ba'aa lalgal dirigadakatmakli muthal mukto para imora bharraad al mor tiim. Agumdasin gidil mungil masasi, gmea adro ol mukuspa agin saru.
Mang, tegida, ah, korra, ah, omes seringil wasay maybe girid al mot magi considering yet chairman. Mang, elangi, eh, kadwa se sumang fifty-five bar game al mor bab, eh, kou remain al ngara DC. Adibi, mang, girid al wasay, remain a contribution or gawal six percent. Ndakal girid al mul mo three percent. Andi tirigel, el mora DC plan, amo oreo wa a contribution or til mo three percent. Ndii, agumdas ba'tara, girid al omdas seringi wasay, kada magarang esel matting share employer, waya government employer atirgar ogui. Even though ta contributora three percent, ndi government ta giril contributora seven percent. Mas sey gidil additional, el four percent, el government ta a contributor ngi, agi kadway el tal blalsa. Ndakalbora akount terngal, el employee, nding every payday government ta manggadar sey gidil blalsel mira pension. Mang, kadongua, ah, employer contribution rate, ngara babara employee contribution rate. Mang, al sugumanga kanga ra, amora DC plan, eh, emer gong ya, eh, etad didaktar three percent ra pey chagara nga, ndi government ta mat seringira seven percent. Mas se labongin seven plus three ma, a pensiona ngua ten percent ra a pey chagara nga. Ndii six percenta amora akount ternga, esel four percent el additional contributiona employer, amo manggadar tegidil, el blalsa, el mor o malu'ra DC plan, eh, omagegara. Mang, that way, engmo aramari gatyal ludod al mora pension, el dakal pol subject to appropriation. Mas sugumung, ung, giriwal korra, amaskama maldasro, sing magarang al korra, other work outers sey gidil musapela government, ta put additional two to three million a year, el mortyal, al fundal make sure engmre'ga dal obagega.
Okay, so, so, meh, haladi ka clarify ra one at toko il make sure kada our numbers is correct. Ser, a milliman, ser al lotop da stadini, eh, pekstuani la milliman reporteng ma sey. Sel, el altaiming, the minusera, six ma six eh, mentu el percenta, the minusa wududela adro roga governmenta la alsi. Ngai de la segungu sey de tuwel percente, sey gidil employee sharea, sey gidil opangela, ngai gidil adal mora DC plan. Ngai gidil adal mo pera three percent, governmenta loliya three. Sel six percent el mle sharea government, el mor sey gidil original ne tuwel, sey gidil di mel mol mel nga adibi. Lom alu'rtir ga gidil currently tiga gidil adal retire. That's what I think sey gidah, ah, galimle, eh, uldasu. So, if we want to increase, di wini, nding gidil amendra la eh. Kadongu sey gidil, sel, se, tuwel, mang six sey gidam migrate, ngai la adal mora galay DC plan, three percenta share ngi, three percenta ROP omal ar ngi. Sey gidil six per, sel six percent, sel six percent, governmenta di mutal increase ra, ah, one percent el mengmo seven. But in actuality, el aga se, seven, di actuality, governmenta wala pera, ah, ten percent, right? No, 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 more than that, lengel adal di pera three, ngai ble'da ma, ngai ble'da migrate, ngiya di pera three ra be sl DC. Government ta teke sel three ra be sl DC, eteke ra six ra. Am utal di bi, egida ngua one el mul, ngu lo liar ngi, mengmo ten percenta governmenta.
Chairman, make iwi, sel ngara minimum report, trayda blam olgori, mal blagatakl. Bulwasay option, optional, consider pouring half of the accrued entitlement or deposit to each individual. Eh, di mulgori, eh, di atsia mulgori, kasi in the future, a three percent contribution from employees and three percent contributors from the employer would be added to an individual deposit account with the fund. This could alternatively be communicated as the employee's six percent contribution. I used to fund the DC benefit and the six percent employer contribution, I used to fund the DB benefits. Sey di mulgori, ndi jagil se mal interesting, kasi this is actually the same. However, this then implies that employer takes all the DB risk going forward, um, tamara employer side, which may not be desirable. How, how this is communicated should be considered carefully at the time of implementation.
Ela sey gidil.
Ela sey gidil burden, el, tagidil report, tam sah, ne sey gidil, eh, mention ngay sal. Se ya, agumdasin gidil determining ngi in dollar value, se tiang motela amount ringi. Sey gid, ah, girid al motri teringil wal bolbel sel government, el mora program. El mo gabor, ah, gabor, ah, partra obligation government, el every year, and contributora, kada schedule ringil wal loan, el giril government pay bakar ngil mora program, eh, ya, re ruti al mora program al mo solvency. Ling, dakal se edel di ignore se le, se ya, ah, 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 klungel ablalsel, el, kada mla ogar ngiya, agan na omregal years, el amla accumulate, el na ngu tial value ra gala, el dimo fourteen cents. Therefore, ngirid al determiner sey gidil value ra wudud, el giril government, el contributor ngi mora fund outside ra egel regular contribution, ah, ah, employer. Sey gid, agumdas, sey ama solve problem rigid going into the future. Ling, ndakal se edel di win, maskami, let's say, twenty million, twenty five, thirty million, ndi na se edel di win maskami, ngai de wada schedule ringil, annual, ah, ah, payment, lual korra, waygal beka loan payment rigid every year, kada schedule loltob de ringil mora program, eh, agumdas, sey gid, egida solve a problem rigi.
Al merangasuleme, senator, al la be'la ma'aka, at chairman na vice. Hmm, girid al mral blakatakl mangadu el waytiam. Ling, mal makatakal, el gu mral wasay ngarya paper trailer adra pension, administrator aw al el may. Mang, tarat toko il dakadaw migawar gid, esel blal dalia at chairperson, el wasay kada creator sey gidil liability account el momdeel. Ndakadalu utel mingititu garingi, eh, dakam, dakal duwa sing mor sel tam, digawdodam, mang magarang, kada mral, el wasel sugumanga ngarya sey gidil toko il momdeel, mandakal korra mo partra political, ah, ngaranklel. Esolange, ling, waytiam na omregal, kwaswa dal momelek, lamla memol toko. Ah, sel guk neeldasul mel wasatad, increase seringil mo seven percent ra employer, eh, ma employee, eh, sepel kutmaklitiam. Ah, se bakrengawase, se nguk timor sel guk gungil, lakadu ngubutindi, tagidil blam delire el al wasay. Tiang ablalsel dakadaw migawar gid de ringi, al tangge gare, gare dimal ar ngi, rapet karra, mandakadustob. Adi, igora kantilaru akma se, el arakem waygora dimla kanga ra, a budget el mora pension. Oi, mang dakal wudud, se mal kalamral toko, ndiangatal wudud el elang kadongartyal pandemic, osisultame kadongral di wasay, metirgay gidil adal masuka pension, lom alu'rtir gil belal tru el million ra tarra, eh, malu'tuyra tiangara, orala adengirti ra ma egal ogui, amal di do lingi tal wasay. Boom katmakli sey gidil mora la'la, el mol ukl, mang, malu ngiltoko, ayga, kadongral osiger sel mo klungu olirar. But to kale, waygal mildura aw al el, kemi omakamama, dimbe rigidadri, bagargidil giril tial toko. Mang, korra, ah, waysel, wasado, kadongral osiger amo ngil kutmaklitia, lengutia malu ngil program giril adar bela. Mang, malo tutirangal constitutional gidil wasay gidil adar bela, telki bilkorra al leo. Mang dakal giril way say, mal misula.
Sula nga, trustee, mangi, eh, chairman, mang, ah, I guessing, kadala al mutal mo, omes agaidil korra, blada discuss, eh, eh, mama mal uspe'ah, ah, oh ur el mora la. Le, sey gidil, concerner, trustee, oka bea, ngiril mora la, le sel sugumang, ayigora di, elat tial ludasul mol la wasay, aboard amogutmokla, giril regulaionsel multautara DC plan. Ndii, el sugumang, ndiaga egidil, amantel korra, amal no blagatakl, el wasay, mang, motela nga employee, etela nga employer, eh, eh, e egal ludodam, magarang al credit, et mang motela nga blals, ma, ayegel additional contributiona government, ta momangadar sey gidil blals. Eh, al sugumansap edal gayngase, ra egidil mo, mutal mo blakataklala, eh, agumdas wing, glabay more clarification. Ma, kmul way say, ngedirakal girid al, el momesel sel guk mo proposal. Proposal a DB, wasay ngarang monga ADV, el asab edal mo, ta akal tablul undaswa. El giril, ah, mulase kadong magarang adar resolver tial unfunded liability rigi.
Sula ge, awera, di gubes halin ngarya tuh, commenta na, kapal bile, ah, vice chairperson, tiang abile rigi. Um, obora page eleven, ser al gotol mori, tiang la, emil kna'la, olbi ra glulaw, Republic of Palas, sel bol ngarya ngasongos ra beka axeurista di, homlo wududra chikya. Somebody has to be accountable, accountability start with republica government, tira mra ngarya giril omalu'rtiakla. Ngarya, ayga, agumna strike through egar ogui, akma dingi, mang, ah, agumna strike, um, last strike through, andi kmeder eknaramen sata, commenta gmi, el al siin, sel mulase, ngiril mori ngi abes section, sel mulase ngirid al omal ar a three million, four million, five million, whatever amount, tdi ngiya ngil amount el mora bill, magunita se, melakam obes sey, um, last strike through, di please amla liara one rabil, maseng giril mori ngi wududel mortyal on annual basis, lom u'ramri at the time.
Agiril ya tiang, tiang, el central message, so as indi agiburawelak. Eh, kau tial may dadule, kada moloyab, esel la nguitsel mutum sisi etiak.
Way say.
Let tiang atiak, tiak toko ra nineteen eighty-seven, ya olbi ra diakatalo tuti. In fact, Antonio Belsam, Leo Otte Mesowis, bohem lo olbi ra loa three million, eh, diakal, 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 amtial onetiu, bohutu olbi ra giloa. The great God speaks for themselves. Mang, tiang, ah, ah, biam iray seringil, il basic league at the market, gmiw, le olbi has not done it. Even though agi wa axeurial study, ndiakatalgi, me'naqta la'la lo siyawri. Eh, wala am erit, eh, dang spore, ngatiam nambarra ngi, mang, le musigaw ngil la nguitse, cheyre ngil oyang, mongar el olbi. Girba iborulil wasay, etiang lela national government, lom ukl ngil, retirement plan, kada mo direct. Ndakal korra aloitra donlela board, ma house, ma senate, ma president. Eh, by the way, ngarya talagala, milliman report, el gumdasinga direct warrant consideration rigi. Tiang, tiang olongasra age ra, retirement. Tiang adomo se, three mo sixty-five, ngarya amtama.
Ndia, ndia, ndiaga.
Don't sixty-five, motirgay gidil adal mosado til ne, ngarat, three, two thousand? Bol aplast tirigel gidil, tiala la. De kal, ndiha ringi, de ma ha tirat.
Two thousand nine hundred, medel eti tiala la.
Edel li, mel, don set biya age mo sixty-five. Sey milliman report, ta diakalasen, ndi, one year in term, must one year every three years, two years, six to sixty-five. Seven direct, ta ra, aw ngil, tegane gil dobal, diakal cheyro outra liability, eh, di, ke di mo, boheng siyawdodel motodra annually, motrigi bhal pra, al tial payout.
Way say.
Eh, mah, ngarya, sumunso miagin reli, erimesel, commenta gmiw, eh, edel li, ling, ah, al at, na kasistey taragi, and I'm still kicking, I can work seventy-eight.
As a, also, as a, one more, two more comments coming, hadik tuh agid, eh, korre stop by, ah, where gubes sulang. One more comment as a, um, member aboard, sir, over sir, retirement income security program eh. Ah, do we bring it, se, open up el mora rogu'la, ah, whether, um, page fifteen, rabil. Definition, se diakal diwa seta dimo adra government, kada amend sey title forty-one, social security, sel yangal mo, am basically employeea mo rogu'la adal, even self-employed persons, se yo's issue definition. And, I think I'm lemoktega se, se ol sisbra adra, egale, private eh. Adi, soal, nou ter ngi, eh, eh, chairperson, akmulase, kada mla obes le, mal diakal wudud pension, ndiakal, ndiya se diakal wudud pension, nding diragan ngani agidil administrative cost el mo, we do egar ogui, of course, ngirid toko, nding, se klot toko, I mean, brand new, ombodotu adra, baygal eh, eh, self-employed, ma individuals, sangar private sector, ol sisabakya, and that's gonna be a big chunk of, somebody has to pay that administrative cost to redo the, the system eh. Ah, diragan meblagataklil, el rabil, eh, vice chairperson, la se sel trip, I think, I think, ndakal blagatakl rabil, agungu yurangi, I think, in, in girid al magataklil, la singel adal orora government, el elect, el morty agidil be'sel retirement, ah, ah, system, ki'al be'sl DC. Adiakal omal arab be'sel three percent, ngsey gidil, el rate de ringi, el six, eh, sel mle contribution share ngi, sey gid, adungu lo, lo liya be'sel, el DC program. And I think, adra la, agumi, what, what she did was, as a be'reed, ngay agidil rates, magarang demistri adra aboard, ra ikam, but I think that's something that needs to be codified, as a moktega tial la, adasi atiakal rates. Ma adal orora government, ta diakal wudud omal arab, be'sel on top of three percent, se katu. Ndita agidil ngarya, el al six se ringiya, di du murjir ngi el mora, ah, DC. Ndik, akmu yurala, ndi diakal blagatakl moktey, ita se, please, em, 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 tirigel, kiya dimo tirigel adal orora government, el mo elect, el mo.
Ela, awul klobal gul, ndiaga bol, ndiaga bol, gale gare bol olar ngi, when he will start. Ya omur mo three, ya retirement, three, agel mo gale, el mo page, ra we turn ra three. Ya stay at six, el, el can't worth el mora, abes, eh, he's gonna get a credit for a higher contribution rate, ling, nok kloba investment de ringi, mora so isbra.
Kahali. Mang, elangi tiang, ah, el DC plan, ah, way aldulwa say, ah, employee at three percent, eh, employer at three percent. Way say, mang giril la employer, el matsra contributiona employee. Mang, el asendulwa say, ah, six percent el didaksionra employee, louru ra government, ta mortyal DC plana ngi. Eh, kou mulwa say, ah, government employee, ah, six percenta contributiona ngi, ndi employer contributiona ngi, eh, di el matching sharea di three percent.
Yeah, so, what I'm, what I'm saying, eh, eh, diakal blagatakl rabil, nding, emna sel minimum report akma se, el altaim, adal oru'ra government, ta tuwel, ah, tuwel percent, ling, six ma six. A milliman, sel stadia, milliman akma se, kadongu, kada tweet, sey gidil six percent el employee sharea, ngai gidil adal, ngul murjil, ngul, sel six, ngul mora DC. Sel labora DC, ngel adal sobre elang, ah, kadadi melara, sel six ra DC, ah, sel threea employeea dimo, po dimo minusa ra teri ringi, sel threea governmenta match rim, olbo kada masa, la se, amnamo, and apple twelve mo, so nine percenta contributiona government. Esel contributiona government, another six, sel melara di bi, adi medel, el funda, ti'al egal benefi, eh, egal benefit, sel gim, eh, pay. Se, amla, sel agale, milliman, I think that's what the bill was trying to do, but I'm not sure.
Okay, so, me elangi, eh, kadwa se, elakatilulwa singel, adal louru'ra two thousand, el one el meel, amla contribute ra twenty thousand. Til andi sel employee sharea twenty thousand, eh, employer share, employer sharea dimla countering?
Dimla gim counter ngi, le sel, se, sel, sel, value ngel adal, be'se value ngel adal, ngai gidil, sey gidil, ya, mi utungil wudud. Sel sharea, on a, on a DB plan, on a, on a DB plan, ah, adha, ndakal DC, on a DB plan, sel goto mora pension plana belaw, gawal kalkulay ta benefit, ra gawal sulobital basis, sey gidil six percent el diblen midron, lwa'aw utugi. Sel wududela government, el six percent el matching share, se, awanar tiang, eh, olab al investa egal wudud. But, tabne dizaningi way say, ndi sey gidil sid manira, wa lele, senator, isal sey gidah, adi mla al maintain de ringi, me'la la.
Okay, ndiak, malu ngil namo blakatakl, okay, me elangi sey gidil, mosado ringil twenty million, aygeyda egal ugu'virar adal lotmo. Ra akount, ah, may, aygeyagiril klokla langalad, el, el tongulunler akount rigi, is why you're saying.
So, is coming, sey gid, am lemoktega, wakasing, twenty million, ngalad, am louru, am louru, el twenty-sam years eh, tiranga eighty-two percent, mentu thousand nine hundred, employee since two thousand twenty, ah, two thousand one el meel elang, so twenty years eh, sey gid, amount of twenty million, tial blo sisipim, akmo metitur, sekta se, magarap, open akount ra adal, eh, gore, ek issue ra promise to pay, or some sort of bond, la se governmenta bela mojar. Se, sey gidil twenty, adi, sel employee contribution, tiga ogui eh, okay? Ndise lo mo bul mora DC, eh, bom start talomelang, emla mo gire, mel legal tablon, ah, consider del wududem. Way say. El, el asel obora, ah, DC, eh, gore gaw, ah, amal ar a six percent eh, dakal gaw. Gal adal louru'ra omal ar a three, ta minusa three ra wudud, mea governmenta bela, la se, three, san usadra ngaya minimum. I got you dasu, I got you. Ndia kan nga, ak question, ah, kasi, ndise lo obora DC, eh, let's say, ah, komo omregal louru', ali, sel dagaradi singo, radibi. Sel komo omregal louru', gana momen, la contributiona gaw, ma contributiona employer. Yeah. No. Kada dimla, on a DC plan, on a DC plan, agungu sel six, gotungi, sel six, eh, ah, eh, mama investor ngi, ah, magit, right? But tiada, chair. Agi investor ngi na magit, mesel sugumanga ngarya six, but let's say, let's say, malu ngil na magit, menten percenta return, right? Mesel six, mesel return, and then agi credit, sey gid, the three percent, rate ta'ra, three percenta account ta'ra. Le la, intamo funda ti'al, el DC plan, amoktega DC, ase, ngaga mesowis, ba'la ngarya akount ternga. Yes, I understand, tila, I guess the point, eh, chair, ulgu sadra ngi, kamil terul chair, don't call it a DC plan, al sugum, ndakal way say, tila. Le DC plan, eh, understand, de ringiya, dagaray galwa, four oh one key, agirem ngarya ability tirgaw, let tiaw wudud, eh, match ngiya employee. Eh, gawagirem, el gaw, gaw individual, amo online, etam skap plan, eh, katu sol investor wudud. Ali, gamam la mo, la, tial guk DC, eh, define contribution as we know it, ra system ra regel, el ngul mena talgibul mo di.
Hala, ma, um, tial mosado ngiya, way say, la mo DC plan, masegidil six percenta lolor ngiya chairman, na hamura. Ah, six percent, el three percenta, ablengilura pey chagara gaw, ma three, eh, three percent ablengmat sing sharea employer gaw, ma tangusey gidil six percent loler akount ta'ra gaw. Plus, ayegel investment earnings, al, al credit akount ta'ra gaw, ma tial balance ra, rapet karra, amaral mor bab, al base contributiona gaw, ma contributiona employer gaw, ma investment earnings ra gaw. Okay, ndi la'amo dictate, la wasay, ndakal sabem al malaringi, dimorosel bom retire, esel bom retire, eh, gawa malaringi. Ndakal sabem al dimor sel so, me emol withdraw ngi, malu bebor sel so, me bohara stock market, temdula se, ngaka investa wudud, galwa'ara wa'ara. Ling, ngara ul, ndiaga trust law ra balur belaw, ndiaga, mbato ka, diakal, el sabed, el wasay kadong magarang, eh, protect ra, ah, ah, investment ta'ra gaw, ma retirement ta'ra gaw, ma aboard, ah, giril investor tial wududem, eh, garintirgawa three percent el interest ra every year, tial akount ta'ra gaw, growing forward.
I, I guess a question, ah, kasi, me lasel omu bul mora DC plan, ndiaga, mbay diakal mutal optional, adra di bi, el al se bi il mau wudid ra, ah, where a fifteen years, at least, a dimai gel contributiona tin, so you're locked in aboard a DC until you retire, is that what you're saying? Okay, eh, se gayge, gayge, gal policy questions, el gumdaswing, um, ngarya, adal awukmola bi, gamam, kasi, tila diakal somam. Eh, oi, el alt, el altaim, ah, again, waysel dolgori, ndiakal ngarala, ngarala, hadik, masi pension plan board or board, moralikom resolve la agidil issue. But, so those are, ul maniara, ringi, no, no, true DC plan, waysel mulgori, is an account, lu usan klegar ngi, ngakan la retire, asa eh, ngakasokal melat tial wududegar ogi. Ak mora ma asangar ngi ra uspe'ak terang, soal mora melalona, bakof hawai, ndi gaygidil, anga and apple modo, modea. So, akma dingi, ak, em, madangala, rationale, a chairperson, maseng ra ul, mandiak, akma dangalise, ling, um, the problem is, as a, what else can we do? Do osmari close, or we find the some magical ludodere gerel may? So, structuring is okay with, I think aboard, the madosi krolle, and the, again, ak mutakoba, kai pa'so la se, bedosi, sey gid, ludodustob, tial bleeding, where at thirty-four point three million, el al two thou, diakal wudud ngala magit ra next month, the next year, asa nguwa.
Oi, mal, under, so, the ulama, minimum report, ah, regament ra fifteen years annuity, ra DC fund, ah, sangat e'lela, ah, DB plan, el phase out, eh, make sure, eh, DC plana mlamomui, ra, where a most of edal withdrawal wudud. Sey gid, ah, wayal dirigal, al strategy, ra fifteen years, eh, convertible mo annuity fund. Mang, al sugumang, um, atima, annuity fund, el fifteen years, eh, this one, el wawududem, eh, nguk, ah, mol mori ngiya problem, ra gaw, eh, guk merak government, akma se, ngaka diakal wudud, eh, I cannot survive on this thing, mang.
Chair, til agirem, eh, that's an optional individual, waysel lolor ngiya, agidil eh, ra one el adal, sugumang guk fil, kasi ngaka, wayswak wududegar el angaling ngarya, klo, el, el banaligar el altaim, tia diakal se emel stop ra adal, magumdasing girid al mulas sey gidil optional, ndi, kadong consider ngi, di waysel, el al existing. Guk tingu, sel wududem, me mira, sel contribution, korra government, ah, employer. Yes, well, and what you're doing is not DC, awul, madagadu, ngirem, al masa optional ra adal di regi.
At, atara problem, se sel alawa early withdrawal, amo jero balance, tial DC plan, mlamodeka pension. One might as well just forget the whole pension issue, lagita pera administration cost, tial pension, eh, ba'aw, le ra atati, so, rau wudid, and ta diakal lungawudud. Sey gid, diakal ne problem, ra guam retirement funda, ulma talilutal changea ngi, le ra atati, ngi'la wudud, ogui, and then mlamodeka retirement, taktir, tal mutal mek, masakam ospe'awdud. So, those are the balances we need to.
Akma dingi, I understand that tila, anga, ul, ngirid al dirigal, losi krolle, sey gid, al dosadri, kasi, kadong dirigal inject a funding, el losi gawdud, al dirigal masa, sel optional individual, al sugumang, mal diya, kadong mortilang, what you're saying, ayegel, gumdaswing, ah, kadongora nga, last resort. I, I, again, agumdasing, ndiakal se, emel, lamkodortiang al DC, al define contribution, emer gong limit ra adal, guk mal mortil al level. Tadi, tadi, gaygel, sel age retirement, pora sixty-five, al adal olbi la, beota wuriril, diakal obra, sen se, diakal beka, adal asilol sisakal mo sixty-five, ma, ma, temdula, se, diakas, urulisel, bui, option, at sixty, eh, adal, al so, retire, retire, eh, uli, tem, ah, ss, tem goras, be'el, retire, la, sel bol sixty-five, bol mu sel full. Something like that, ah, um, ma, ma, ringta, is the giril, el bol mat singi ma, ss, ete dirigal, ngar sey gid, el bol se, el sey gid, el optional, el mora, ati, ra soril, guk mor sey gid, omra. Yeah, malu ngil, I think, ah, ser, goto mora pension plan, mlanige gidil options, ra early retirement, ndi ke, ke, wa'ble phase out, ra, but ta'ma gi borna, early, kamla modiak. Anyways, um, so, since a, ngar sey retirement, the digo ice, ra adra, egale, tiang gamitil, mulase, egal laster tiala years, rogu'la adal, diakal soriritar. Adal dimo sixty, me, uli, te exemption, asa, buskama one year, buskama two years, buskama. Ah, da dimo 60, eh, ulingit exemption, ah, se, must kama one years, must kama two years, must kama three years, ah, from, ah, olbi ra galulau, to executive branch, to, ah, PNCC, to PPUC. Um, since the other mo 60, eh, de, tortira, ndiakal soril, consider, consider about people, la soril muta malmal, laurior. So, um, I'm not sure, ah, SS, and, at, SS, and dira, gomlang, ah, semna, mas al motela, di 60, la nganiya audasa, se mo 65, I'm sure, ah, the sorila, se mal bo, or a uniform, sel retire, adal expected malal tablo.
Keme, na, yari tira, al adal, tiri retire, ah, ni, it psychological, andi, okmoku nga adal, mi thuga, ah, alu tel aile, ay ngel retire, ak lugu, uru ra kabramental, emulmei, mu moma la SS, ma pension. His mandri pay will be 50% tel his mandri pera laurior, but ndiakal adal soal, mu musukha girel lududud. Segi de, ah, ul, al adal, ndiakal soril retire, andi, andi, di bilgoi, yang 65, ak maludelang, andi, ah, adal, ah, adal, il musua 20,000, ra tarak, before the past 10 years are retired, ngal ammusua less than 1,000 five, ra, SS, ra, abu, you know, el ammusua less than 1,000 dollars, ra, SS. That's less than what he was making while he was working, mung, kal adal ult de reside, le diurior, a financial situationertil. Na 1% ad belau, al retire, eh, more, more lower standard of livingertil, le moge girel lududala lolal, di, SS, unless etemusi gara another job.
Ke de, dirakal murawulsa regulation, sel gumi, eh, chair, sel suku mndiak, ndiak, retire, a month, emade alay gil kontribusion, eh, ngra nga mo, ngra process, el morangil beneficiary kau. One time a payment, adagam ngir, so, ah, gundas, se dirakal, option, segi da, dirakal, motpura, sel teki de, lo siul tol, ulor ngi. Um, maybe gayga, mapat, teki el rules and regulations, eh, chair, na kamuram.
Um, yeah, once a balla, atian, we basically, we have to go square one, and then there's gonna be, let's say, la calls for a new operational plan. So, we have to go back to square one, and then we do all of these things, ah, from scratch, ah, taking into account that, teki de best DC plan, there is a plan for that, operation plan for that, and then guk ngarisi continue the operation plan for, teki dirak DB, ah, teal remaining DB.
Magulingit, eh, akiduri tiang, malborat, absolute, mem, do mesel tiel bill, el dimo accomplice, ah, gayda to. Bo besa private sector, insipad ngwa private sector, mo riu, lela, dongsel sa private sector, considering economy situation. Di do mesel gi, el kanbur, trata, teakal, se, el marbesa, maral mei, ose, te ngaranga, mo gi men, ngara, ah, ah, DB, eh, ngaranga, tika, kumotser DC. Eng, abai, mob, dibel mobiota uriori, eh, chair, but ndiakal, risk put, private sector, el ngur, eh, asaid, ebolo urortyang, guk do mesel ngi la tarak, ngirurak, edo gogil, no mesela private sector, le, gundaseng, ah, mlamig, tukad, tral, accomplice, ay gal, kanbur, drngi, ra kabramental side, eh, merkoto, siusra, akwadi du li segi de.
Um, sulang, eh, chairman, ma, ah, gundaswe, gi by gi bom, nga gayda blada discuss, me, ah, adala, arkama, mal ngalo tour, tiel, el bill. Malbor ngiya, ah, sabel morasagan reading, and then, ah, ay gi, il muta, el center ngi, el, el mei. And then we do the financial assessment, eh, decision, eh, gi da, aramul, eh, girela, wasin, ngarangat tiella. Ma, kada, kada il muta, lo mesar ngi, emerkom, ngiiler, sel suggestion, ra, teki de, guk lorur ngiya, ah, singa, kelle, call, call in, ah, actuarial study, lorur ngi, lobongil, eh, DB, eh, dirakal, lo meo, baraudas, eh, by the, bodada, gayda, the, mesa, sel second draft, ra, ra senate, eh, la may se, the we se, bodada, gayda, the combine, eh, to try and achieve the best, ah, possible way for world. Minimala impact ringil, mura, armalaang, armalai, ma kabramental direk, I think, eh, that, that achievers, segi da, go la regide, and then, eh, we go from there, atang, eh, chairman. Mang, I guess, eh, nama ungil, ay gal guk, amlosabedel, smader el alsils, ma, um, by dim, tunga closing remark, eh, the closer hearing, and then, eh, we'll send you the second draft, ra, sel already.
Um, sulang, eh, chair, ah, gundaswe, akad beklad, el recognize a fact, tel wasin, ngariya, financial challenge, ra CSPP, se, gundaseng, blatakl mergi de. De direk, el blatakl mergi de, wasin, ngarale, del, axiling thrill entities, tiel board of trustees, o visa president, magomir olbi ra olulau. El losi kau lududud, le, se adi, more solution, ay gal butok, el dotmo, kli, wa tiel draft tel bill, ay gal wa, ah, millimen, actuarial study. Ay gal dikpe de, wa ngel molgoe, chairman, temporary patches, ndiakal bo sol, bay gal problem. Le, akmalar ngiya, pension ngariatul, challenges, sel, kada mla, ah, over, segi de, el 3 million dollars, el, dollar here investment, ra bekarak. But tiel long term, el, el problem rengi, ra unfunded liability. Mung, nga gil bladu, senator isal, ndi lududud, ndi lududada, ah, insert, mura, tiel problem rengi. Ndii, unfortunately, ngel gosongosaududet, kabramental rengi, dem, ngosongosaududoni, ndii, sel, lungil aruudoni, ah, kada mla, recognize a fact, tel wasin, ngariya problem, ngire del, meri del resolveri. Gundaseng, tiaga tangeel, el, salman, mogomanga, tel masadra, pension, kada mla, mo realize, ra, a problem, el face re. Mang, kame usel, wasin, ndiada, modeada, gundaswa, ol siswa, private sector, mei. Mang ungil, andi, tirgal guk pesel employee il mei, ah, tirgegi da, la mosoi sbra, a DC plan, mang guk moge gare, eh, urior girel. Mang, kada di, om, talra, assegi de, suku gomal mol, ma, astarusko, ngariya potential, negative impact, el mura, ati al plan, kada mo, osa edel, mo gosongos. Egi damada ngel, wasetiang, akantribut, el, ra 10 million dollars annually, mura ekonomi, ablu belau. Ma, klo, tutrel, mang, akti, mo gayga, eh, edol mol, mal, el makalaurior, losi kau aldule, eh, again, ndi lududada, ay ngel losi. Sulang.
Sulang, ah, governors, ma, gungi.
Oh, yeah, kada kora, ogiwar, from the, maklo, la adal, ma, ngarengal, eh, akmal, um, karaminga suliu, eh, senator isal, wasi, kadi morior giri, tiragidel, la adal kabramental. Oy, ah, tiel DC dosadre ngiya, ndiakal maral 401K. Le, kada gosongosaudud, ah, ulungire del controller ngi, senators, ngawa, mang, kada marula hybrid, el, el, and, and, waishen, but tokol, DB plans, ah, marula hybrid plan. Mang, ndiakada, ndiakada du la, si tiel lududada, ah, mo deka lududem. Lududem, andi, atar, pitfalls, ra, ay gal 401K, ah, sel mentala tiringgal adal, sel ngu, tiel kadalala lududud. Andi, ngu, withdraw ngi, emerkom, eh, di within a year, mlaku, madiro gil, ngel adal, mo la, eh, mo, enda abel, mo problem, ra kabra, sel kabramental ngar ngi. Waishen, ma ulka, da, gire de ruli, mo sabedel, el, el, lolngse, tiragidel, adal, ngar teki de DC plan, sabel maintain tiel, segi da, atar, ah, atretal, ngiya, gundasre ngi. Sel, el, legal dosadre ngi, sel wa five million, se actually, upon, sel five million, five point something. Ah, dosadre nyam ilime, se, di, sel, la address, sel tiel DB, tiral, beneficiary, sa DB, de la. Ma, eh, mongari, sel sesel, der ngel, ndiakal tirgal, members, ah, di luset, tiel lududil, mo, mo, lurti al. Le sel, ideal situation, ah, si tirgal members, contributing members, actlo, al contribute, rengi, mo tiel plan, gung sel, sesel contributionertil. El ngu, hara, tirgal retirees, and the rest, adal ara, ah, 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 tiel investment, eh, hoping, la si kada, ngu, sel guarantee, 6 point something percent in returns, mo sabedel guk hara orti. Andi, tiel, el, el, patar, gi da, malge gare. But ndiakal, baski da, tiel, el move, ma ulka, du ngit, sel five million, tiel five million, ah, ah, gi re, somehow, ngirel, ruli, wasin, sabel increase, ndiakal bel decrease. Eh, gi da, urior, convert, tiel tirgal adal mo, knowing, wasin, increase, tiel retirement age, eh, yes, kada mo, lessen a payout. The problem with that is, tirgal, mesoi sbra, eh, new employees, angara entry level, ah, lududir, eh? And if we keep the tirgal, adal, dingartian level, of salary level, it will prevent the tirgal, ah, afford mobility, ra wage, wage earning power, tirgal newly heavy. That will also lessen, sel mo, ah, millimen report, ndiakal lessen, sel, eh, contribution, sel revenue. Ngire de realize, segi de, gayga, gayga, eh, el, butokol problem, el dosadre ngi, nga ga, mal, sel goton, mek, kasi, tiagidel liability, unfunded liability, is the most serious problem, rengi de, la address re. And I'm glad that, ah, tiagamil, adal olbi, la, mlah, realize re. Andi, tu du, ngur, ma, ma, adal, abor, assume, so ma, increase our revenue. Ay gal, ngang, olngsek, ra, contribution, ra, members, eh, olangat, ra, ah, benefits, ra, gayga, gayga, di tool, tools, ngara, ngara, imomamre la. Eh, me, employer, you have all the necessary tools to solve this problem. Mang, I agree, wasin, gire de, laurior, ma laurior, andi, gayga, tablo, dongur, ma. Si, gi mo morur ngi, ndi am sopra, tiratira, soril di, no, kama, ospe, gal dongur, ma, eh, wis, kama, kira, ma laurior, in, maintain, tiel, revenue. Okay, kono sulang.
Sulang, ah, trustee ukapi. Alil po nga trustee ngir mangi, more, eh, gomeang, malde nga ra, ngir mang, malso, ngir mangi, gomeang.
Sulang, eh, sulang, eh, chairperson, el, arti al teal, ma, ah, ngel introduce, ser tiel bill. Mar, mrengasuliu, le, ngoltal, maral, beda da, gi da, adu, el, maral, el, ma gatir, gi de, meri, me se, wasin, maral, ngariya, bal, sel kabramental, sel dilira, walel, wasin, al tang, se, el creator, sel, el guk akantel, wasin, liability, akantel, blal, sel gire de, lo, lu, ur ngi, ra bekarak, but ndiakal, eh, guk pol, ah, ah, di loyim, telal, le, maldi, ngidil, ngariya, telal, sense, el mori. Segi de, aklo, al gul, sel, el, ultas, sel wasin, mlaringe, imal, olbi ra galulau, marur ngi, but ndiakal, di du, wasin, komtori, gesera, editor, sel tingela president, el mei, wasin, med increase, tiel, el contribution, ra employer, segi de, ah, ngora, malge gare, tokoy, di, kum, kum, maral, wasin, global gul, el, ngaralel, olbi ra galulau, eh, ngarale, daro gu, le, kada ki da, ha, di, beli, ki da, teri, bo, le, tarak, klas, kada, momso ka, ikang. Ngora, ah, momringlar, nguda, la, kada, dogotmo, karingil, kora, di, al tang, gareer, el ang, klugug, nyao, se, ngidil, ngariya, ah, at, ah, lududel, mo, lu, ur tiang. Ose, sir time, eh, sel mildung, ra, ah, chair, ah, senator isal, wasin, momungut, sel private sector, ret, ret tiang. Um, al tang, mo sabeda, tarak, klas, sendi, el alt time, le, kora, mal, nga, attitu, kala, eh, ngunila, obuk, eh, re, eh, di dosadre, el alt time, eh, betelo, lu, ur tiel, kora, mal, el, el wasa, tarak, klas, ser, ndi, klugug, nyao, sel, maki ta, magit, andi, mo, ah, au, tiel, li ipanela pension plan. Mang, kora, maybe, ngint, eh, ngint, eh, ngint, eh, ngint, andi, ndiakal bola, ndiakal melo, de, sel, ure, urere, lakamiu, ureriu, ma, ma, da, da, kala, ngotmo, katiang, mang, mlamol, ma. Le, kada maral, di mo, diu, le, eh, o, ose, sir time, eh, ngal, or ki da, al adal belau, akkor, omara, segi de, tokoy, wasin, ndiakal, opesa, napension, le, milkatmo, kli, mokte, kamlik, girel, segi de. Mang, kada kara, di, itma, rogu, ngar, teki de, emol bilas, emiling, taigel, mar sel, but ndiakal, ruor, ah, kama, sulang, kama, masaula.
Sulang, ah, more, eh. Abongi, chairman, eh, bo, eh, is Maria hearing.
Sulang, eh, eh, chairperson, ah, Inabo, ma, mi rogul member, akamiti, ma, beklad, rogul. Um, aktimo, magsimile, kasi, eng, tokortiang, gundaseng, mal, gotulwa, sweb, kara, magit, el alt time. Ah, magit, el alt time, ma, mal volatile, andi, up and down, up and down, um, I always go back, al beblat time, gundaseng, se, we have to go back, kasi, as suku mang, ndiakal, mal, maringi, regida, ah, tiga lududel, lo, alu. And people have to start sacrificing, ah, assessing. Sel 1% tel gimul, dor sil, ma president, tamlo, ibn sel wild, ra, ah, 1 million. Ah, sel, kimno, ngokle, kora, kum, keisang, ah, masi, ulu, kuma, kada mainasa, benefits, ra adal, le, guk mag, guk kora, ndiakal, anfe, ra adal, laurior, eh, eh, edolngas, ah, contributionertil, ra adal, malaya, al malaya. Sukuma, kada, sacrifice, eh, ngidro, kulu, di mora, da, okay? Ma, sel, suku kada mainasa, 7% tra, ah, lududela, adal, malai, get current, eh, benef, eh, benef, eh, retiree, eh, eh, yield, additional 1 million, 7%. So. Coming, 10% ta yield, ra, ah, 1 million, yes, 7% ta 700,000, ya, di, tel ko, uh, adjusted. Mang, maringera, ah, gotel, ah, adal, ah, gotel, ah, emol, adal, gotel, ngariwa, pension, lulari, ya, 50 dollar, malmo, brother, ngi gi de, la adal, dongwa, ah, 10% tel. Andi, ah, ngaralek, eh, member aboard, ra civil service pension plan, masi, asogu, mndiakal lududud, le, maral, ngosongosaududra, eh, nganiya, butoko, tutrel, um, um, klo, tutrel, la, ay gal, hospital, ma, you know, we only can, have so much money. Thing, gire de, we have to start some, from somewhere, ah, either, kada mainasa, kama, mlamora point, tel mainasa, rogu, whatever unnecessary expense, ay gi, motob, ndiakal approve, ay gi, ma. Le, gi, malas, malse, ba, lududegi, pension plan. Paktingu, sel, mayas, asogu, ma, rogu, ala sacrifice, and that's 2 million, that we can garner, eh, ngura, of course, eng, obligation, kabramental, mo, le, gi, match, mo, pay. But it's something to throw out there, le, ndiakal, ndiakal sabegal, eh, chairman, ah, mi, al adal pension plan, oh, mesel ngi, ah, se, namo, ndiakal lududel, mesoi, sba, kabramental, da, se, el afford, eh, gi de, beere, mal, ah, le, once, el, nganiya, muti, emol, financial crisis, why, 2008 financial crisis, and, sel, tiel, 34.3 million is down the drain, it's gone. And then, eh, segi de, taim, ba adal, ay gal, kau ul, eh, mang, sabedel, change, ah, law, di set immediate solution, ah, si gire de, lospe, akashen. We shouldn't be touching this 34.3, lela, lungila magit, we should allow it to grow. Um, se, aktingu, segi de, ngur, eh, re, ulingit, gumi, la, se, kam, kam, mem, mem, gundaswe, tha, nga, she, ra, ludas, oy, momringera, dartama, dartal, adal, di, ngunila, by, talgibel, guru, si, el ang, ah, beere, in the future, eh, bo, guru, si, rogu, mal, momringel, albu, ma, kla, klanala, ma.
Soal, mokbo, ikang, ay gal, karamla, repeat, drngi, eh, chair, ina, beeri, diploma, rikwe, eh, misis, mora, ma, le, plant, ndi, mlaka, lududud, mure, la, FY 2022. Eh, we honor, ah, si tiel budget, ra central mea, ableng mainasa 10% ra, abek, budget activity, ah, di metal house, ah, tal state kabramental, ang maya, kadi, mlaka, katertil.
Adi metal house, tal state kapalmenta, ang maya, kadi mla ka gatertir. Eh, dega kabul moreyak a first quarter. Yado mes a financial report ra, tiam nomreg la FY, ndaniya se sell oturi. So, let's stay tuned, eh, keep lobbying with Minister of Finance, guk on your side. Just agamundra bidosbe el mududu ra Minister of Finance, Mary Isli. Emer goy, do meser gidi ra january wasin sipedel, mwa ra koleksion ra first quarter. Then dega kabul moreyak FY, nil gamdeela. El al, digetu mansa, digo October, November, mo, snat the end of the day. Mang, emral, naga emral, omral wasi ya olbi, dekal namomreg la FY two or three, na nyau du den ego, emle help. Eh, we should have maintain that, ningaidat chair lady. In very last minute, emle, until a president, six hundred some thousand dollars, mora compact review. Last agi, mimtiga diwa si, alada, help a PP, si masalu ut. Magi goramlo, omoye gil, double one point six, du, ayten, emroye goramlo. Andi, agumdasat chair lady, is up rest tial issue, remitian na dule, imdo meser gidi, mo, enderal a first quarter, eh, salasinga ra uksebe edel. Wa ihiel malgoi, se se ma wasin, del, guk kilengol len. Again, akmal agree, a magit taungil, ndi magit could go down to any time soon, with the inflation namri gil, malal. You never know, sulang.
Um, sulange, chairman, eh, mal, masauri, ihiel gaminter kau. Eh, sell, domeser sell recommendationera, amiliman reporting, ngu wasi kapalmenta gire ngariya lolaringi. Wasi, ngarii sell one million, eh, la, ngani, at least ten two million. Nal sugumang ndiaga, ngararegal initiatives sell to, to ti, ngirel five point five million. Ma, kudamatinga wasi, ah, reductionar expenses, ah, ah, reductionera. Ayga gida le retire benefits, atirigal, el optiona gida gil, lo meser ngi. Ma, akpal, dingutigidul das, el ngul maskamiuma, dirigal bomomeser ngi. El wasi, al sugumang mal, mari ngi la da, reduce a benefits, tiri gel malair el ang. Eda, etirigel, dirigal bololai, tiri gel, tiri gel, tiri gel retire. The reduce sell benefit formula tir. Le, tial migration wasi, tiri gel fifty-five ara kriel morabab, a remain ngara DC plan. Tiri dirigal bololai ah, retirement. I mean a DB plan, tiri remer ngara DB. The, the change a formula, ra, a benefit. But tiri gidl fifty-five lomor babal mo retire, ah, sell bol uro tala, reduce a, a benefit are there. Mang, kabo momeser sell wasin, sing, la, goram, ngariya al rally. Ngara, ngara, impact ringi, magaranga the reduce. Nganiya suggestionera, amiliman, wasi, level one percent per year, instead of two percent per year. Undi, ndiaku, eh, sing mal, al klowa impact ringi morti gal adel mo retire, ngara. Sugumang sebe edel momeser sell direk, eda, tiri gal lolyarala.
Simple math, if we're gonna do that, we're cutting them by fifty percent. So, eh, eh, gamiu ya, mapaber, gamiu ya, mo, mo, malari, ding. It's, ah, ndiaga au du, um, I'm really, begicra, magit el anga. Senator Isal waso under the inflation el anga. They thought el mula saying it's gonna be temporary, but it doesn't look like it's temporary. It's going up every day inflation, eh, alchins. So, um, tauri or abil, eh, chairperson, eh, gamama malu litase, mosikrole la wudow. Eh, first quarter, guk dirabol moreyek, second quarter, edlu tal mekala du, masintse eda guk leng. Agi schedule del mostatadro danra, january.
Okay, mang. Right now, is el, domesap, is a revenue source, and diaga, is a revenue source. Ah, olbi ra galu na proposal, is a initiative, sell goram mo implementa, eh, e-commerce. Ayegi dal sebe edel corporate registry, ma, ah, is citizenship, ma, yegi gorap, is a, while gorap. Ah, partra e-commerce, sell mo generate additional revenue. Ndige, dirigakabu domes, ah, ah, are they, eh? Mang, um, we will also discuss with the minister, refinance. Ma, ayga gidl eh, eh, tyal billa, dirigal mori ngi, momla ament. And then will seal wasin, ngaranga, sebe edel uli, el, mori ngi, ah, au du dal ma pension. Len, sell, sell bodral di, el mo creator a DC plan, eda migrate are tiri gel adel mora DC plan. Eh, gida dal creator a asset are tiri gal adel, wasin balse dal, gire dal mangada are tiri gal adel. Mang, eh, da, mani initially, amal gire dal, el, el, malas malmorsal tukur babal sebe edel, ma wudodalo aral sell. Mang, um, ayegi give om, dirigal discuss, wasin mo angarangara impact ringi mora budget kapalmenta. Ma, chairman, akmal, mari ngasulela, for the ma management ra pension. Eh, kudamo, malas mal, um, returna solution, al minimala impact ringi, at the same time. Sebe el, tal gibal stoper sell. Lomoku, wal unfunded liability ra pension, ediregal mo, sebe edel meet a monthly payment, eh, ngaria, se sell oturil. Sebe edel invest in the, into the plan. Ma, mal masule, tial, public hearing, or tial senate bill eleven, das twenty-nine, eh, dimorte gide, moreyak.